I'd like to call this meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first meeting of May, believe it or not. And we'd like to thank everybody for coming out this afternoon. And welcome. At this time, if you would stand and call Reverend Estes to offer an invitation and then have the plug.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, as we bow before You, we reach out to You in these troubled times. We know that You know the future where we do not, and so we ask that You would guide us and direct us through these uncharted waters. There are a lot of problems, a lot of troubles, and Lord, we pray for wisdom. We appreciate all of our leaders, for the weight of leadership is heavy upon their shoulders. Be with them, Lord. Give them wisdom, give them knowledge, give them understanding, and show them the way that they need to go that will honor You and be the best for the citizens of our county and the city. Watch over us, Lord. We pray, protect us, guide us, and direct us, and we thank You for blessing us in so many ways. You said You'd supply our needs, but we find that You also throw in a whole bunch of our wants, and we praise You for that. Guide us now and direct us as our prayer, in Jesus's name. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any additional agenda items to be added tonight?
Madam Chair, we need to make a couple of changes. The first request from Progressive Contracting to remove Item B under the Consent Agenda, and then under New Business, move the Budget Amendment, Item G, to after the closed session.
Okay. I'd like to make one request on Item C with the Consent Agenda. If we could move it to New Business. And I guess we could make that G and then move the Budget Amendment, make that H after the closed session. Just a little discussion on that. Item C? Yes, sir. The additional WIT funding. I've talked to Mr. Kane. He's okay with that. All right, anything else? Okay, your motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, public comments? Just give your name and your address for the record. Hey, how are you?
Gabby Morello, 2623 Creek Trail, Sanford, North Carolina. Most of you know me, or in the very least have seen me dragging my kids around to these meetings. They're thrilled, as you can tell. But who am I? I like to think that I'm an advocate for my community. I sit on various boards and attend meetings with people much more experienced than myself. For the last year, I've worked as an executive assistant to a successful broker in charge, and as of today, I'm a licensed agent. A difficult journey that I've worked hard for. But I've worked various jobs, including refueling and towing jets at our beloved Raleigh Executive Jetport, manicure and all. I'm a 27-year-old single mother to Aiden, Jaxx, and Avery. I'm also one paycheck away from being homeless, but I'll never be homeless. It's not that I'm better than homelessness; nobody is. Even in my darkest of days, I have a support system and a network that would keep my head above water. Possibly what's sadder than being homeless is the realization that these people and families are completely alone, no one to call and nowhere to go. Right here in our well-centered county and our endearing town, we have families sleeping in their cars in the Walmart parking lot, and families stealing to get their one-room $500 weekly rent paid at the Palomino. Some say that people choose homelessness or bring it upon themselves. Even if this is the case, does any human really deserve to be homeless? I too once felt indifferent about the homeless. It wasn't until my involvement on the boards of communities and schools, and now United Way, that I even realized there were homeless children in our school system. With my current involvement on the Community Engagement Committee of the S3 Task Force, as well as participating in the point-in-time counts, I have become so much more aware of this devastating issue we face. Before I was adopted at the age of four, I didn't have a stable home. I slept in cars and homes of strangers. Often, I wondered who I would be today if that was still my life. How would I have finished real estate school if I didn't have childcare? How could I work so much if my boss didn't allow me to bring my kids to the office? As difficult as it may be at times, I have the tools of support to navigate through my struggles. Tonight, you will hear from Mayor Mann as he presents a case for investment, providing a united front to end homelessness. I ask that you consider how a united approach could positively affect our community and change the course of lives for hopeless individuals. The issue is bigger than our nonprofits, than individuals, than our churches and local leaders. It's going to take all of us. Outsiders are already turning their heads to get another glance at our economic growth and success. Let's do our best to ensure that no groups get left behind as we continue to prosper. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Gabby. Congratulations, too.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to call on Ms. Debbie Davidson to issue a proclamation celebrating Older Americans Month, and we've got some super special ones in our county.
We have had a, already, just, it's only May 7th, so we've already been celebrating. But I do appreciate the opportunity to bring the Four Youth Proclamation honoring Lee County's older adults. And if I'm allowed, I'd just like to read this. And thank you, Jamie Brown, for assisting me with it. Whereas Lee County includes countless older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community, and whereas Lee County Government is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers through a variety of public programs and services, and whereas the county organizes the Senior Games and Silver Arts of Lee County for adults 50 and older that will take place May 14th through 29th, acknowledging the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being, no matter your age, and whereas Lee County Government Enrichment Center promotes home and community-based services that support independent living, involves older adults in community planning and events, and provides opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners proclaim the month of May 2018 as Older Americans Month in Lee County, North Carolina, and call upon residents of all ages to observe this month by recognizing older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of the Lee County community.
Thank you very much. Okay. Your motion? Any discussion?
Yeah, thank you very much for recognizing older people.
We have got a wealth of older Americans in here. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you very much. And remember to participate in the Senior Games. Lots of good times. All right, moving on to old business, I'd like to call on Mayor Mann for a case for investment to provide a united front to end homelessness presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's very nice to be in your house tonight.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you for putting us on your agenda. Also, thank you for the public comment by Gabby. I did not know or was aware she was going to make that comment tonight. Thank you for your service. You're often told what you don't do well enough, but rarely told how well you do things. And I know you're busy and you do a lot. I'm here to ask you to consider doing just a little bit more. Let me give you a little update or a little background on why I'm here and the case for investment in homelessness. A little history here. Last year, we identified a growing homelessness problem that was made more problematic by the lack of a low-barrier emergency shelter in Lee County. Basically, we have nowhere to take people who are in a desperate situation, a place where anyone could go to avoid extreme cold, or extreme heat, or extreme weather conditions. And then we had the condemnation of the Simmons Building on Wall Street, and that instantly put about 22 people into a state of homelessness overnight. 16 of those people, however, were immediately placed somewhere else thanks to the city council's quick action. A little biography, if you will, or the story of the average Simmons Building occupant basically was the working poor. It's not what we thought lived there. It was what we learned was that they most just lacked credit, or they lacked a first month's deposit to get back into a housing situation. Most of them were in that situation in Simmons Building because they had lost their job for one reason or another. So from that, we needed to get into action, and that's how the S3 Housing Connect Task Force was organized. We didn't know what to call it, but eventually we named it that. The S3 stands for Shelter, Services, and Stability. The makeup of the committee has been about 50-50 city and county residents. Some of the greatest contributors have actually been your county department heads. People that work in your county services offices have helped us probably the most because they seem to be on the front line of this situation, and they know how to deal with it. So their participation has been invaluable and has actually been very well used. This is not, the S3 Housing Connect is not a liberal group or just a bunch of not-for-profits wanting money. It's not a big giveaway group. It's a group that understands that we have a great humanitarian reward in solving problems like this, but they also understand that creating sustainability is the primary goal. This is a diverse group of people. We have men, women, white, black, Hispanic, Republicans, and Democrats on this committee. And I have, in five years of elected office, have not served on a committee as vibrant and as passionate and as dedicated as this committee has been. It has been amazing to watch 45 people go to work every month, sometimes more often at committee meetings, than this group. What we've learned is homelessness comes in all forms, and it affects all people, and it's not a city-county issue. It's really not a city issue, it's really not a county issue. What we have learned and determined, and I will tell you tonight, is a social services issue. The problem can be solved or controlled to a great extent. However, if we don't act now, we will fall further behind and allow it to get worse as the community continues to grow. As community grows, our problems grow. My reason for being here is that I wanted to lay out the facts for you firsthand and kind of make a reasonable request for your support. One, to acknowledge the problem, and two, for your financial help. And I do believe that we are all in this together. We're seeking up to $115,000 to be added to the city-county community development budget. The city, or the county, I would think, equals about 45% of that request, or close to $51,000 would come from you. Why? Quite frankly, we've got a tight budget in the city, and we need some help. But we also think it's an equally shared issue because it's an equally shared problem. We need your help simply that way. There may be some ongoing expenses. I can't tell you that I won't be back here next year asking for some help. I don't think we'll be asking for the same kind of help next year as we are this year. The goal with this request is to get the Bread of Life Ministries headed by Mr. Bill Hicks, who's in the audience tonight. You're going to see him on a video. The goal there is to get the Bread of Life Ministries, which will be the manager of our low-barrier shelter, and will be the creator of the McKeever Achievement Center. It's going to be called the MAC. And that will become a day center, if you will, a place where our homeless can get counseling, can get shelter, can get services, get job help, placement help, up to four, five, six weeks potential to get them back on their feet. The goal is to get that organization grant-ready, sustainable. But they can't receive the grants we know are available and out there until that facility, that organization, is grant-ready. Hence the why we need to come to you tonight to ask you for your consideration. A firm commitment by both of us is crucial in addressing Lee County's homeless problem, and by taking a stand, we position the community to leverage the federal and state monies that are out there. So here are some of the facts that I want you to consider as your case for investment. Our point-in-time count, where we went out with our task force, and we literally went to all the known areas of homeless populations and counted people who were homeless, was 95. We know we missed a lot of people, but we were actually able to put our hands on 95 people, have a conversation with them. Of those counted, 51, or 53%, were totally unsheltered, totally unsheltered, living homeless in something less than a home or a shelter. The 2017 national average for unsheltered was 35%. So you can see, we have a real problem in Lee County. Our percentage of totally unsheltered is way too high. If left unchecked, I believe this number will grow. Doesn't mean the county and city are doing anything poorly or wrong, it just means this number will likely grow. In the county, there tend to be tenements, tent cities, tent camps, in the woods, in places where you can't normally see them, and then they come into the city in the daytime to go back at night. They come into the city soliciting for money, looking for services, spending time where there are other people. Locally, the S3 Housing Connect submitted a financial impact study, and I'll give that to you at the end of my presentation, that suggests that the county's homelessness problem has a financial impact on local organizations, not to mention the negative public perception that exists. In addition to the financial impact, the issue affects the delivery of services and patronage, as indicated by the Lee County Library, the Central Carolina Hospital, your EMS, and our Lee County Schools. Approximately 301 Lee County School students in the system are identified as homeless, living in a car, someone else's home, sleeping on a floor, or living in an abandoned or condemned property. Homelessness will greatly hamper, and does greatly hamper, their ability for them to succeed in the classroom, and affects the other children as well. The Lee County Library has become a de facto day shelter for those who are homeless. Our impact study showed the average visit time of a homeless person in the library to be four to eight hours a day. The average visit of a regular citizen is five minutes to two hours. The reason they are there is that they are primarily seeking a place to find air conditioning in the summer and heat in the winter. They use the Wi-Fi, and they use the Lee County bathroom to clean and bathe. The wear and tear of the building is evident, and is somewhat off-putting for your regular citizen usage. And I understand you may be considering a pending investment in the library system. I think that should be considered. The hospital's being used as a clinic. It's there, it requires extra staffing to address the problem. And more importantly, the director of the hospital told me that when a homeless person is checked in and receives treatment, most of the time in the emergency room, they feel at odds within the sales field. They have nowhere to send that patient. They pull them back on the street, and that patient is likely to be back in the ER in the next week, or the next night sometimes. So they have that problem, and they're willing to help us with the problem. Probation and parole has the issue that sometimes they don't have a place to drop off a client, and the best place is the library. So we don't have another place to offer them currently. So I wanted to give you some of that as a case for investment, because I do think it affects some of the services that you provide. Some of the best information we've received is from your own people. They are the front line of fighting this in the social service realm. I want to take a look, if you will, indulge me in a video that we prepared, and let you learn just a little bit more about homelessness and the work of the people involved, and see if you think it's what you thought it was when you look at the typical homeless And just like in the city, we have to wait for our technology to come out.
These, when local communities own their situation and create resources, it helps leverage both state and federal funds to address the problems. In Sanford, Lee County, you have over 50% of your homeless population is unsheltered. Many of those are chronically homeless, and you are going to need state and federal funds in order to effectively, especially have a response to assist those individuals. So I encourage you, as you're contemplating your budgets moving forward, to think about ways you can use your distinct city and county resources to help move forward the goals and mission of S3 Housing Connect.
So I believe if we value people as much as we value our possessions, even more so, if we pour our resources into them, we can not only help correct the person, but we can help better our society. Because these same people, they end up in our libraries, they end up in our emergency rooms at the hospital, they end up in a number of different places. But one way or another, we're still paying for their services. In this way, if we pay for it on the front end, we'll help them, we'll help our society, and we'll all do better.
Homelessness, again, is one of those traumatic events that does have an impact on our school students' attendance. It can have an impact on their test scores, just their social-emotional development and behaviors they have in school. So it takes on a wide range, just like any of the other traumatic events that our children experience. It takes on a whole range of behaviors and problems for our students. We try to offer services, as like tutorial services, our council of social workers, teachers, administrators, being aware of those students that are experiencing transition homelessness so that we can provide those supports to them. Currently, in Lee County Schools, we have approximately 301 students that have been identified as homeless. That's probably not a real accurate number because of some situations we just don't learn about. That's one of the reasons that we feel it is so important for the task force, the S3 Connect Initiative, and the agencies all working together to support our children and our families who are experiencing homelessness or being in transition. Because that, it's not just one person that can solve the problem. If we can bring in more resources for our homeless families, that's going to help the stability, the children feeling secure, the parents feeling secure, and able to meet the child's needs. So Lee County Schools is very fortunate to always have a very collaborative relationship with all of our agencies, and this task force and this initiative is just another example of how working together, we can solve the problem.
Hi, my name is Leon Goleman. And I think about the program, and it really saved my life. It started out with Simmons Buildings right near Wall Street, and the Indian Building, I didn't know nothing about it until that happened. So we had, I think, two weeks to get out of there. So I decided I would go up into Johnson Lee to do the action, to sell Mr. Delphie Rogers. So within two weeks, I had put it out there to hear the rich profits and stuff, to get it back on track and all that. And they proved it, and it's other way. Simmons Buildings, they hit on it about two weeks. And Johnson Lee had, they definitely thought they paid the first month of their annual deposit, and I thought you could have two of them for me. And since then, I've been here 15, 16 months, and it's very nice, quiet, comfortable, very dreamy, sound effect, sound effect. And if they were a big help, you know, they really helped me out, and I really appreciate their services. But that's why I'm pretty speaking over the average. My experience with it, is that it's not a pure, I do expensive services.
The average face of homelessness is not that person holding the sign. The average face of homelessness is a mother and her children, living inside the car. Maybe she made some bad decisions, maybe her husband was abusive, maybe she has medical bills that she could not pay. But the average face of homelessness is not the man standing on the side of the road, or the person pushing the shopping cart either. It's generally a family. And you say, "Well, I don't see that," or "That's not happening in our area." I'll tell you very, very easily how to find those people. Go to Walmart. Go to Walmart at night, maybe evening, around dusk time, when the lights come on. And at Walmart, go as far away from the store where there are still lights on, look far away from the door, and look for the cars that are packed full of stuff, of clothing, of blankets. And you wonder, "Who keeps a car that junk?" Those are people who are actually living in their cars. And you can't say, you shouldn't say, "That doesn't exist," because even the school system recognizes that it does. And the school system has come up with a novel approach to saying that the kids should still be in school. Wherever you park that car, they'll allow you to use that as your permanent address to go to school. And it's not And it's not just happening occasionally or once in a while. The school system last year said there were 300 children in Lee County affected by homelessness who qualified as homeless by the school staff. That's an amazing thing to say for an area our size where homelessness doesn't exist. Trust me, it's real. It's real and exists everywhere, not just in the town of Sanford, not just around the local house, but it exists in the county. I'll challenge you to do this as well. When it's colder, when you're riding down the road, look for smoke. Because very often in the wintertime, when people are not having where else to go, they will build tent cities. And you can tell where they are, they're not on the road, again, they stay out on the road, they stay near the railroad tracks. But if you watch and you look, you will see the smoke rising and you sometimes go, "Well, this guy's bringing trash." Quite often, it's a group of people who have set up and that's where they're cooking, or that's how they choose to stay warm. The face of homelessness, a lot of times, is invisible, but it is still there. We have some very, very, very powerful tools right now available to us to begin to try to cut down homelessness and to do what our goal is, is to make it rare, brief, and non-recurring. Rapid rehousing is a tool that does that. Rapid rehousing, in case you're unfamiliar, is we will take a family who's experiencing homelessness and we will help them find a place, pay the deposit, turn the lights on, turn on the water, and for three months, a little less depending on the situation, we will compensate you and help you go ahead and do these things, we'll pay for these things for a long time. We'll also help you, whatever things it's going to need to help you not become homeless again. If you need a job, we'll help you find a job. If you're a microdisability, we'll help you with microdisability. If you need food stamps, if there are things that are preventing you from being able to do all the things that you need, we'll help you do those things as well. We'll help you find daycare. Most families who are mothers and children, when the children get out of school, the mother has a job, where do the children go? And the cost of childcare can be extremely expensive. It can take your entire check. So a lot of families are either work or I do childcare which you can't do either. So rapid rehousing is a way to be able to do those things, to get those things started. And that is occurring now on a limited basis in Lee County. And we're trying to ramp it up so that we can actually be more effective. We're searching for landlords who will help someone get a start, help someone get an opportunity to get back into housing. It affects the county in such a way that the people who are standing in town oftentimes experiencing homelessness will go back out to the county at night to stay in the county. And if you're faced with a situation where it is, I either break in this place or I stay in the streets, what would you do? It's a moral question. If you have children, you're trying to get your children into, inside of a place where there's a roof over their head, what would you do to make sure that your children are provided for? I'll let you answer that question first.
So thank you. There are several people here tonight with the S3 Housing Connect. Would you raise your hand if you're on the committee? There's several. Thank you so much for the participation in that and for being here. Commissioners, this is a problem we can solve. You know, we're in front of this. And I pledge my reputation on the fact that this commission, this committee, this S3 Housing Connect will get this job done. If we can provide an avenue to housing for those who are homeless, we're assisting them in improving their physical and mental health. Those who are housed are less likely to commit crimes, they're more likely to improve their physical, mental health, and they're more likely to be healthier. And stability also means that these people are less likely to commit crimes. Permanent housing helps position people so they are less reliant on local services and on county resources. Rapid rehousing, as you saw Jeffrey speak about, has proven to be, right here in Sanford and Lee County, a great method for getting people back into stable housing. It helps people to get back on their feet by providing short-term support that enables them to reestablish themselves as good tenants. As I mentioned earlier, 22 people in the Simmons Building. Within two weeks, we had 16 back in a home and they were working. They were working in places like Kentucky Fried Chicken and Bojangles, and they were walking from the Simmons Building to work. 16 of those were success stories within two weeks. You're always going to have two or three that are chronic with issues that are preventing them from working. But what a percentage that we can affect by just doing some of these things. Our top priority, again, is positioning the Bread of Life Ministries to be grant-ready. The skills of our consultant at the city is previously funded, you saw him, Terry Alaba, will be instrumental in this process. Several people, in fact, that day, were at the S3 Connect, were at the State Homelessness Conference where we filmed those folks just last week. They're learning more about providing shelter and housing services and they're continuing to engage in how we can be proactive. So overall, my appeal in closing is this: What's the right thing to do? What's the cost of the county to do nothing? What's the cost of the city to stop what we're doing? What's the cost of this community to fall short of this objective? A small nominal investment upfront may be far more valuable than what we're actually paying now. The cost is there. You may not know it, you may not have measured it, you may not be able to right now, but we already bear the cost, city and the county. So what we're trying to do is help our people in Sanford and Lee County get back on their feet, get them off the street, and improve the quality of life for everyone. I think we can. Investing with us in the S3 Housing Connect, it's a coordinated response. It's going to work. We have a great mission, we have a great plan. If you can join us with this community development budget increase, I think that next year at this time, we'll have a heck of a success story to tell you about. Appreciate you letting me be in your house. Thank you for the great job that Sanford and Lee County are doing together. We have probably one of the greatest small communities in North Carolina, if not the best, because of you, because of City Council, and the citizens that support us. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, do you have some, I know I've got a page full.
I can talk to you about where the money, how it's broken down, or any of those kind of questions.
Yeah, y'all go ahead.
What kind of timetable do you have, you know, after maybe a one-time investment to be, you know, for the shelter to be self-sustaining?
If we can fund it, we'll be self-sustainable by year end. We'll be eligible for federal and state grants next year, 2019. So the emergency, the immediate need is to get them grant-ready so that they can receive their eligibility next year.
And is there any place in North Carolina that's like us, trying to do this, that's an example that we've done?
There are larger cities that have done successfully. You know, here again, Sanford and Lee County are kind of pioneering. And we already have Anson Hoak, Moore, Richmond, and a couple other counties and cities already calling us to replicate what we're doing with the S3 Housing. So I think our model and how we went about creating the task force and the model is something that other people want to do. I don't know that we have a small city that we can look to that's done this, that calls Small Cities Suffer. But what I am telling you with your help, we will show other cities how to do it as well.
But the goal is to get the city and the county out of the funding piece.
Oh yeah, we don't really want to be in the homeless business. We have people like Bill Hicks and all our nonprofits that can do that better than we can. And his goal is to establish a transitional housing facility called the MAC, where we'll have those services where people can get their needs met over a five, six-week period and get that stability camera. But otherwise, no, we don't want to be the primary driver of this. Can the city and county ever get totally out of it? I don't, I don't think so. Because it's our burden to bear, it's our city and county to run, but I don't think we're ever going to be the primary benefactor of it. Right now, we have about $115,000 budget for immediate needs, which are about $19,000, and then capital long-term needs, of which emergency shelter plumbing and emergency shelter air conditioning. We can't be grant-ready if that McKeever School Building, Bread of Life Ministry, does not have central air. So we've got a $28,000 quote for that large, that large building. If we can fund that, then they'll be able to receive lots of different federal and state grants. And we have a plan to go to the community and the business community to raise funds after that. Hope I answered your question. Any others?
The major concern I have is, I mean, I attended the opioid, you know, conference that we had together, and it's the same concern. And, you know, how do you pick and choose what you fund? And, I mean, I know that they were talking about having 16 beds and they're in Alamance County. What's the likelihood, and I'm asking this because I don't know, that, you know, funding this could turn into an opioid crisis center? Is that, I mean, has that been discussed or?
Sure. Well, Commissioner, I think we already have, the problem's already here. So we're not going to try it anymore, it's here. What we can do though is, no, it won't be a magnet. What we're going to do is provide immediate needs for our people. The people that are homeless today didn't come from somewhere else. The people that are homeless here today came from Sanford and Lee County, and they just haven't left. I don't think we'll ever be an attractor of that, because there are other missions and places in Fayetteville, and we've visited the ones in Fayetteville and Raleigh. They're successful places, much larger and bigger in scale than what we have. You know, right now, we have to find people and ask if we can go to Durham or go to Fayetteville. They don't need to send people to Sanford. Will we attract some? Potentially, yes. But will we solve more homelessness cases than we'll attract? You better believe it. And that part, I'll put my reputation on. So I think we'll do more good than we'll ever do by attracting others. And the 16 bed is ridiculous. I agree, if I'm the sheriff, I don't want to drive my deputy there and back in an hour to process somebody that's, you know, we've got to fix that problem here. So I think the first stage is, what I'm asking you about is the immediate funding for emergency shelter and grant readiness. The second phase will be going out into the community and helping the Bread of Life raise the money necessary for a transitional day center, where these people can go instead of the library. Commissioner, I would think it'd be one of your best priorities, just for the simple fact that we can eliminate some services you're already providing and the cost that we may not realize how big it is.
I see the difference between the opioid case is the 301 children that's involved in this, is where I can separate that. On the McKeever unit, how many units would you have available there once that's completed?
Currently, for the emergency shelter, we have
20 beds.
20 beds. Now, the ultimate goal down the road is a transitional center, a day center, which would be many more than that.
But once you get to air conditioning, you can then become a nonprofit.
We can be a grant-ready nonprofit. Rapid rehousing would be the rest, about $35,000 for that rapid rehousing program that would give them the funds to work with these clients for up to six weeks. Like I said, in two weeks' time, we got 16 of the 22. Waylon was one of them, in housing, and they're working. He's coming to our task force meetings. So, long answer, sir.
Not all these are mine, some of these are from citizens. So, okay, the point in time count with the 95 was 51 that were totally unsheltered. When was that done, y'all?
Recently. January 31st. It's a point in time count every year on the same date. That's the date that is considered the best time to count.
Okay. What, what, what was our homeless count a year before that or two years before that or?
Before the task force, we had simply ignored the issue. We had one person, Director of Haven, tried to count the entire county by herself. And I think she identified 38.
Yeah, that's what.
This year, all these people behind me and a whole bunch more went out and did it the right way in teams.
So that's really sort of our baseline?
Yeah, our baseline's starting now.
Okay. And I guess what I'm trying to capture is, I mean, in talking to some of the people myself, you know, do y'all have the data? I know you did make the comment that there were people from Lee County, but I've talked to some that aren't from Lee County that are downtown Sanford. So do we have data about where they're from, what caused their situation? Is it a loss of a job, mental health, you know, an abandonment issue, an abuse issue, an addiction issue? Do we have all that categorized yet?
It's all those things, but, you know, you really can't, I don't know that we can speak to that.
I think when Jeffrey Rollins was here and he spoke to us, and I think they asked those questions, they didn't always get answered, so it made it hard to.
I understand.
Yeah, Lee Horn and Johnson Ashen Committee, they resource, they do, they do create a bio if they will provide it.
Okay.
But no, I don't know that we can find exactly why they're homeless. We know, and it's no different in Sanford than any other county or any other city.
Well, I mean, I guess, and the question is, you know, if you come across somebody, you know, say for instance, a minister, you know, a homeless person's brought to a minister's attention and they go and they find out, you know, that they've been abandoned or it's an abusive situation or whatever, and they try to get them with a friend or a family member, get them a bus ticket, or drive them to the next town, or that kind of thing. I mean, you know, just, just things that we can do that are easy fixes to address some of those 95 people. Do we, I mean, do we know the age?
Commissioner, are those easy fixes, sending somebody out of town or trying to send them to a friend's house who's not really equipped or trained to work with people's needs? So, you know, that person's probably going to be back in that same situation as soon as the friend's house is no longer welcome.
Well, I mean, sometimes it is and sometimes it isn't.
Well, I'm just giving you the answer to the question. I think that the answer is they continue to fall back into homelessness. But when you have a place, that we currently don't, to take a client that needs services, we know by percentage that those people in six weeks' time or less will probably be housed if we have a place to take them and a program to put them in.
Have you thought about other sites outside of downtown?
The task force looked at many sites. Task force evaluated every nonprofit that we could have built. And so we looked at that, and the consensus from the group was that the Bread of Life Ministries was the best fit and the most equipped.
Again, not all my questions, but I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm okay. Please. Do you want to speak to that, Bill?
Sure, sure. I mean, I'm just, sure.
Bill Hicks, I certainly appreciate the opportunity. I just wanted to come before the board. I wanted to shed a little bit of light on what Mayor Mann was saying. The question you were asking in regards to whether or not there's some prevention done at the beginning, when people come to us, when we did the point in time count, the PIT count, that's a count that's done nationally, it's done all over the country at the same time, and the hope is that we can, a snapshot in time will identify people, no matter where they are, that are homeless. And the hope is that we catch as many as we can. We know the 95 that we were able to identify in Sanford and Lee County, probably represented about half because a number of them didn't want to submit to some kind of a survey. But the questions are asked, you know, what's caused homelessness? And there's a plethora of reasons. There's just no one, one cause is not it. There's a number. We've had some that come through, the extreme weather shelter that we had at Bread of Life for the first time last year, starting in December. And one of the first people that came in the door, and I expected a completely different look at the demographic, you know, shame on me, I expected that I was going to see, I was just going to tell you the truth, predominantly African-American males. That wasn't the case. The first person that came in the door just happened to be a non-African-American woman who was shivering, she's sleeping in her car. The next person that came in was a fellow that had a job at Bojangles, but he couldn't afford first month's rent, he couldn't afford a place, he'd been staying with his buddy. And his buddy was attracting the police, and they were going in and out of his house so much the night before that when he came to our shelter, he was asleep before lights were out. Woke up the next morning and said, "That's the best night's sleep I've had." Within a week, he had money saved up to get his own place. So when people are homeless, we ask the question, is there, is there anybody else? Do you have family in town? Because if we can prevent them from coming into the shelters, that's the best thing. You know, sometimes if you help somebody, you know, they're staying with a friend, they haven't bought any food, if you can buy some food for the friend, they can go back there. Or you help them with their rent or something like that. So there's some prevention things that we try to do so that the last case is staying with the shelter. That's the, that's kind of like the final straw. But we certainly try to keep them from coming through, through the system in that regard.
Well, and I appreciate that. And I think that needs to be said and heard because I know we just had our DHHS budget presented, you know, we talked about foster care. And obviously, you know, the ultimate goal is to keep that child with their family. But sometimes, that's just not the best solution.
That's why we need our staff, because they can answer questions much better than us.
No, no, no. So is the amount of time that they stay at the shelter, six weeks? Is that, is there a cutoff time, like, you know?
Well, you know, we don't have that place right now. So, yeah, I think that what I've heard from the discussions we've had is typically that's the transition period of time.
It's hopefully in six weeks.
That you can get services around them, where they can get a job. That you can get services around them where they can get a job or overcome the problems they're facing. Some are going to be chronic. Some, you know, different problems take longer time.
Right. Or, or have to be a rehab center, maybe placed there.
That's right. But that's what we uncover during the six-week period.
Right. Sort of an intake evaluation type situation.
That's what rapid rehousing does as well.
Okay. And, I mean, I've seen the plans for the MAC. Do we have a total cost for that yet? Ball, Ball Park, I'm not trying to pitch you on the spot.
What we're trying to do with this request is, this will probably be around $50,000 for you and the community development budget. Is simply to get Bread of Life grant-ready so that they can then begin that quest.
But I mean, to, to create, do we know though? Because it was supposed to be, wasn't it like men on the first floor and women on the second or vice versa?
Yeah, some kind of configuration.
Okay.
Yeah, Bill has some renderings and some concepts.
Right. I saw that at the, at the ribbon cut. Yeah. Okay.
That will be phase two, further down the road.
So when you say grant-ready, what criteria are you targeting?
First, they have to have central heat and air. And that's, that's one of the most immediate needs. Plus, we, you know, we have an emergency shelter now. When it's over 95 degrees in the summertime or over 90% humidity, we need it. But even, but in addition to just needing it, you know, we, he'll do whatever he has to do to make it comfortable or bearable. But to be grant-ready, it has to have real air conditioning. And, you know, it's a large space. It's, it's not, it's not like a home unit, so.
I just didn't know if there were other criteria beyond that.
There are some other criteria, but they, the Bread of Life with the help of the community development plan, they're going to meet those criteria. We feel confident.
And one, one last thing. I, I just kind of want to have, you know, just get some feedback from you or Reverend Hicks or, you know, any staff or anything. One of the things that has come up, been talking to, you know, citizens that have heard about this and, and also talking to sort of my counterparts in other cities that have shelters like this, is the concern that just like we do today in Lee County, if, if we encounter a homeless person that needs specific services and because of their situation, we can't take them to Haven or Family Promise or, you know, one of our shelters. You know, for instance, we take them to the Durham Rescue Mission. So, you know, all of a sudden, instead of having, okay, let's just say, and you're probably right. You know, it's probably closer to 200 rather than 95. And then we do know we have 301 children based on the school system. But, you know, instead, all of a sudden, our adult homeless population may triple because the Ansons and the Hoaks and the Moores and the Richmond Counties are now bringing their homeless here, just like we take our homeless right now to Durham County. I mean, how, do you see where the concern is there? You know, I mean, how, how do we reconcile that?
Well, yeah, I've thought about that. You know, most of the people that are here now lost their, their system of support.
Sure.
You know, the problem's here. I think every community worries about what you're describing. There, there's no doubt about it. But I think the frontline workers of Sanford have to find housing options for people now, and we're shipping them out. But a lot of times, we do what Bill just described, and we, we find alternative situations. You know, I think the other towns are replicating what we're trying to do. They have better choices than us. They have Fayetteville, they have Durham, and they have Raleigh.
Right.
I too believe, though, that however many we might attract will be less than the amount that we solve.
Okay.
I really do. So I think that, I think the answer is we're going to reduce the number of homeless here, even if we attract others. Because it's huge coordinated effort.
Okay.
And, and it will be a much better solution than the current one.
Fair enough.
That's, that's all I can give you.
No, I understand, and I understand. I mean, you know, that's, that's, that's just a concern I think that a lot of people have. Just because, I mean, we're, we do that here in Lee County ourselves right now. Because, because we don't have a shelter like we're talking about creating. We take our homeless folks that we don't have a solution for, we take them out of town. Well, if we build one, will other counties bring their kids?
I think the citizens need to ask what the right thing to do is. They need to understand that we can fix problems more now with our own funding of this. And yes, we may attract some people. I don't know that we're going to attract people in the way they think that we are. I really don't. It's a perception, probably a misperception, but certainly a good valid concern. Our, our goal here is not to bring more people in. Our goal is to help those that are here. Because most of the people that are homeless are from here.
Right.
Okay? They may not tell you that when you go to meet because they don't know why you're asking for one. So they may not be honest with what, you know, they're, these people have pride. And once they lose their pride, it's a hopeless case. But they still have pride, and they don't always want to admit they're homeless. The children in your schools, they will never tell you they're homeless. It's the teacher or the advocate that lets, that identifies that.
That is true.
They will never tell you that they are. They just come to school tired, dirty, and hungry.
That is true.
Yeah.
You mentioned the 301 children. You got that number from the school? How many families will that represent? How does it compare to what they've already identified?
Dr. Waller has told me before, you know, at other meetings, I mean, you have some families that may have four children sleeping in a car and some that have one. So I'm not, I don't remember the number off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
I think Commissioner Reese, it's, it's hard to say. But we're counting 95. Mr. Hicks is probably right. There's twice that many we didn't count. There's probably another 95 we just wouldn't take the survey or wouldn't acknowledge us or we couldn't find.
And that's adults. That's, that's not children.
Right. But they may have children.
A school age that are involved.
Right.
Definition of, the school definition of names is?
I think homeless is considered anyone that's not sleeping in a, in a shelter. They're, they're not sleeping in a home. They're in something other than an apartment or a home. They may be in a friend's home or a car or something other than a house or an apartment.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I can't really tell you that. Does anyone know the answer to that?
For the PIT count, we had to use a HUD survey. So all of those questions came from HUD. And we can email back to you guys. It's very detailed.
Oh, that'd be great.
It asked all kinds of questions. And obviously, we couldn't get all the answers with everyone. We tried to get as much information as possible because submitting that information is how we get that funding. The school system, the reason there are so many kids homeless in the school system is because they don't use that HUD system. They, if they, the child does not have a stable home, they're staying with a relative. They're bunked up somewhere or in a shelter, then they count them as homeless because they don't have their own bed to sleep in. So that's why those numbers are different.
Right.
Thank you. I guess I still just don't understand how we're identifying 301 children and the school hasn't broken out how many families that represent.
Oh, they, I think they, I mean, they have that number. I just don't, I don't have it. But we can, I can make sure that they email it all off.
Well, I think we want to know what that number is versus the number that's already identified and see where we are in total.
We make, we make a determine that, too. That's, that's a great question. I don't know why I haven't asked it myself, but.
And another number, if you could, it knows how many children that are in outer school age are involved in this. Right. That's another number.
Right. And Dr. Waller, Johnny could probably answer these questions right now if I had her here.
It's okay. It's fine.
Didn't have her here.
I mean, you know, I, I know one situation of, of a high school student in Lee County right now that is going, just literally sleeping on one friend's couch and somebody else's, you know, spare bedroom and that kind of thing. And, and we have some of that going on in the county, too. And I know on our DHHS board, we talk about a lot, you know, our foster kids once they age out of the program.
And the good news is the homeless that we have that, you know, is not the kind you see on the street. Those folks typically are with raw disability, have a place to go. It's, it's the invisible homeless here. It's sad. It's real. But, you know, the thing is, we can fix it. We can do a lot to solve this and without breaking anyone's budget, hopefully.
Well, even if you don't solve it, you're helping it.
Well, we're never going to, it's never going to be eliminated. But the, the goal is to be rare, brief, and non-recurring. That's, that's something I think we can do, make it rare, brief, and non-recurring.
When, when's the next S3 meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Four o'clock. Here. You're welcome to come. Anyone's welcome.
Any more questions or comments?
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Mayor Mann.
Appreciate your time and attention.
And everyone else? All, all the guests? Take care. Thank you very much. Okay.
Commissioner, if I may?
Oh, yes, please.
I'll have Molly just to give you some data to support some of the, some of the comments.
Oh, good. Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Okay, moving on to item B, the consideration of UDO text amendment to add language clarifying approval process for all proposed lots that would require private septic system in order to be developed. Oh.
Madam Chair, matter of interest?
Sure.
At the beginning, I know we had a motion made to approve the agenda. Was there a motion made to approve the consent agenda? I may have missed that, but.
I don't think there was. I apologize. Okay?
Sorry.
No. I, that was my fault completely. Okay, any discussion after? Then I need to get it in order next time. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Well, hey.
Whoa.
How are you?
Good.
And you'll find this on page 49 of your agenda. She's got it separated. She just took off one section.
You would like me to begin?
Yes, please. I'm so sorry.
No problem. And good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. As the Madam Chair indicated, this is an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. You may recall this item was presented to you at the joint hearing with your planning board on April the 16th. If you, just a real quick overview, if you remember, this was just a correction amendment to the UDO. We recognize that the environmental health policies and the UDO both refer back to one another. And we essentially wanted to clean that up and actually put language in there to make sure that when somebody wants to create a lot in Lee County and they're on private septic system and they're not on public sewer, then they have to ensure that they have a working septic system. And they would have to apply and go through the process to make sure that they would have an appropriate system. So this amendment is simply clean that up. Just as a reminder, this amendment was brought to the Joint Planning Commission to begin with and was recommended moving forward. It has also been heard jointly by the city and the town of Broadway. The city actually made, recommended approval. City Council approved this amendment at their meeting last Tuesday. You're the second board. You have an ordinance on page 52, your packet for consideration. And then Broadway will hear it at the end of this month in terms of making a final decision. And I would add that your planning board did unanimously recommend that you do consider this amendment. And I'll pause there. Madam Chair, first questions?
Okay. Any questions?
We all did.
Yeah.
To be quite honest.
It's just sort of housekeeping.
Just one of those things we discovered, the staff discovered when they were.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. And we'll just go on to the next one?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. This was also a text amendment. Again, this was presented to you at your meeting on April the 16th, the joint hearing with the planning board. This one's a little bit different in that this is more, the last amendment was kind of more driven by the county's issues. This was more driven by a city issue. If you recall, I presented to you information about boarding houses and how we're recommending that we remove those from the Unified Development Ordinance. It's kind of an archaic use. And the concern that we have with some of the changes we're making to our UDO and land use plan as we're moving forward. We don't want to create a situation wherein we might have an unintended consequence in terms of future land use. Again, this was brought to the Joint Planning Commission. It was recommended and moved forward. It was also heard by you or recommended by your planning board that you consider adopting this. And you do have an amendment in your packet for your consideration. And I'll pause there again if there's questions.
Questions on this one? Discussion? Is there a motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Page 58, recommendation by the Lee County Transportation Committee on the ranking of the Lee County Transportation Projects to submit to Triangle Area Planning Organization, known as TARPO. Mr. Montgomery, good evening.
County Chair, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity. Seeking your consent to forward the recommendation from the Lee County Transportation Committee to TARPO for the Lee County projects as part of the Prioritization 5.0. If you recall, we created the Lee County Transportation Committee last year to help with this process. That's composed of two members from each governing board. Debbie Davidson from the Colts, Bob Hutes from the airport, and Bob Joyce from the SAGA Board. Prioritization 5.0 is the process that the State Department of Transportation is using to identify projects, transportation projects to be put in the 2020-2029 State Transportation Improvement Program, better known as STIP. So basically, they put their projects over a 10-year period. And this is the method that they're, they're using to score those projects. That methodology is intended to incorporate both measurable data and information about priorities from local jurisdictions to ensure a process that is both data-driven and responsive to local needs. And basically, there are six highway modes that projects are scored under. Highway, bike and ped, aviation, rail, public transit, and ferry. We have received our quantitative scores from DOT. And we had 23 Lee County projects that qualified and are eligible for funding. They further break down projects by categories, whether it's a statewide, statewide transportation project, regional project, or division project. TARPO did not have any statewide projects that qualified. And we only had four from Lee County that qualified in the regional category. Most of the projects are in that division category, which does allow you to, the opportunity to put qualitative points up to 50% on, on projects. For, in regards to the ranking, we're only allowed to rank 10 of the 23 projects to submit to TARPO. The respective counties from the TARPO region, which is Moore County and portions of Chatham and Orange County, also have the opportunity to rank 10 projects from their county to submit to TARPO. And then they put them all in a bag and see how they fall out, basically, is how it works. In regards to the recommendation from the committee, it is based primarily on immediate need, as indicated from you and the other governing boards, as well as the likelihood of getting funded based upon that quantitative score that I already told you about. Basically, the higher the quantitative score is, you want to put points on a pro, you want to put local points on a project that you know is already scoring well. However, we did put points on projects that scored somewhat in the middle with the number one priority being the Kelly Drive. I know we've spoken about that on numerous occasions. The committee just felt like this is such an important project. Let's go ahead and rank it our, our number one priority and see where the chips may fall. Number two was Commerce Drive Extension. This would extend Commerce Drive from Hornet Boulevard to Lee Avenue, both for the economic and emergency services need there. That was a, a high priority for the city. Number three on our ranking was at the Raleigh Executive Jet Port, site development for the expansion of the corporate hangar apron phase two. This was the airport's number one priority, having talked to the staff there. Our number four project is a road, road diet on Chatham Street, I mean, excuse me, on Charlotte Avenue from Chatham Street to 11th Street to add sidewalks and bike lanes. That was our number one ranked project that we had. Number five was with the jet port again. Build airplane runoff lane at both ends of taxiway. That was their number two ranking project. Number six was Wicker and McKeever Street, constructing sidewalks and adding bike lanes. That was the number two ranked project from Lee County. Number seven, again, was at the jet port. Build new taxi lane connecting South Ramp Road and all taxi lanes on Amund's Road. Farm Road, side of T-Hangers. That was the airport's number four priority. That was the airport's number four priority. The reason that we didn't put number three priority is because it ranked so low quantitatively. I think it was a six, so the likelihood of getting that funded was very low. Eight, nine are side path and greenway projects. The first is off of Spring Lane. This would extend off of our current greenway. And then Little Buffalo Creek Greenway is the greenway from downtown to City Hall. And the last project that we ranked was the widening of Tremway Road from U S One to Lemon Springs. That had been on the STIP, but it's in the back end of the STIP. We felt that that's a much-needed project. At some point in time, the cost for that is quite high, but I think we need to try to keep that on, at least on the STIP. So like I said, following this meeting, we've already spoken to Broadway, and then we'll speak with the city of Sanford next week. If we can get a consensus, we'll submit this recommendation to T A R P O, and then we'll rank, then T A R P O will have the opportunity to rank the county projects. And T A R P O has allocated fourteen hundred points to put on those projects.
Any questions?
Any questions? I know it's a lot to take in.
It's a crazy system.
The whole process is a lot.
Yes.
Always playing...
I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Now that you have us thoroughly confused, what is it that we're doing here tonight?
We're seeking your consent to forward the recommendation from the Lee County Transportation Committee to T A R P O.
Those, those ten projects.
And then these ten can be submitted if we approve, and then they'll be reevaluated at the T A R P O?
That's correct.
And then they'll be put in the bag, shook out.
And they'll attach, you said fourteen hundred points?
A bunch of fourteen hundred points.
The counties will get together at the T A R P O meeting and allocate points to these ten, plus what the other counties...
And then D O T will have the opportunity to put points on it.
To say that we don't know what we're talking about.
No, we could waste more time.
You have a tough top job, David. Thank you for...
No, it's not, I mean, you know it's not directed at you.
No, 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 I understand.
It's a crazy system. It really is.
It's like the rest of us. He sits, we sit there and listen to what's...
He's just the messenger.
Any other questions on this? I guess we need a motion, just so he can...
Submit it as, submit it to us.
Okay. Okay. Anything, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? David, while you're here, if you don't mind, do you have any update on the Tremway situation?
I do not, I do not have an update, other than the fact that I did, did reach out to them, and they said they're looking at the middle of summer for some sort of public meeting.
Okay. I was asking about that last week.
But they tend to be vague.
I understand.
Did you say that they didn't quite have the completion of the new, what they're going to, you know, going to redo it?
Right, right, right. They were marking the right-of-way and all that kind of stuff. So they're still sort of in the design phase.
Okay. But now, as far as Broadway Road, they're going to start moving utilities and all late summer?
I believe so.
Okay.
I know that the right-of-way agents are out and about.
Do you know the completion date on that, David?
Uh, let's see.
On Broadway Road?
On Broadway Road, I think it...
Twenty twenty?
I think construction at least starts in twenty twenty. Let's see, I think I have it here.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, construction date starts twenty twenty, so likelihood is probably finished twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
That's probably twenty-two.
Yes.
Yeah.
Like, construction's twenty twenty.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Yep.
Except that meeting, he laid a...
Okay, Lee County State of the County Health Report, Mr. Kane. And I'll tell you what, we'll do that, and then we'll just go ahead and do the WIC health, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Well, so we don't have him up and down.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I was sitting in the back, and I was noticing Jamie's printout,
and we're not bringing you Scotch tonight. It says, it says S O T C H. So there's no Scotch here this evening.
Just data.
Just data.
Gotcha.
The information I gave everybody, a hard copy this evening, put in front of you. This is the work, Health Department along with the school system, coalition of families, well, cooperative extension, quite a few others. Sandhills have been doing over the last year to try to improve the numbers that you're seeing in the data on page three. Some of the numbers have come down, some of them are still kind of maintaining a little bit higher. But this report, our county health assessment, has to be done every four years, but every year between those four years, we're required to do a state and county health report. And this is what this report exists, insists of, excuse me. We're working now on the community health assessment for two thousand eighteen. We actually have the hospital on board to do that as a partnership, first time ever. So we're working through that with the hospital as well. It's pretty much a review of, there's really good information in here. I'll be glad to go over any things, if you have any questions, but really proud of the work that's been done. There's more to be done, but I'm really impressed what we've done this past year.
I thought it was good before, we've still got a ways to go, but...
We do.
Have you, I'm glad the hospital's on board. Have you reached out to the First Health folks that are building the...
We have not, but I'll be glad to ask.
I mean, I, they're not ready yet, obviously, but maybe when they're open, especially with the exercise and the pool facilities and stuff.
The surveys that we're doing are currently ongoing right now, so we've got a timeline. I don't remember exactly when that timeline is, is ending, but we are, we have a timeline we've been presenting out to the community right now, so, and it's on our website as well. Hope to get back at least three or four hundred surveys, which is what we usually get in two thousand fourteen is what we got now. More work to be done.
Any questions or comments? Just everybody stay healthy.
Oh, yes, please.
Do what we can. Okay. Well, if you don't mind, then circle back around to page eleven in your agenda on the request for additional WIC funding that, that will need approval.
Can I, can I provide some background?
Sure, yes, yes, because I had a couple of questions. It's a great idea.
The WIC program itself is set up to where a county, if they get in ninety-seven percent or higher of their clients, they receive a hundred percent of their funding. Some of the counties this fiscal year did not. So what the state has done, or the feds, excuse me, has taken that pot that the counties did not get, and they're offering it to the counties that did get ninety-seven percent or above, and giving it to those counties if they can use it. So that's what this money is all about. It's not, it's extra money based off what we projected, so that's what this funding's for.
Kind of a bonus for doing a good job?
Yes, ma'am. We are at ninety-nine point two nine percent, last time I heard.
That's fantastic.
So that's what this is all about. We're trying to reach that point eight percent. So, and there were some great ideas from the board last month about how to pursue doing that as well, so we're trying to find that one percent.
Well, I, I mean, I thought this was a great idea to, to do the ad using the movie theater, and the reason why I wanted to kind of pull it off consent was just a couple of questions. Would we be able, I mean, this is kind of a, a new venture for me. I haven't heard of us doing anything like this before. Once we're pay, once we paid screen vision for it, would, would we have access or a copy of the ad that we could put on our social media? Or did they have the rights to it? Do you, do you know what I mean?
I'm not sure. I'd have to ask.
Um...
I know we've done some, we've done some media work there before, years ago, at the theaters through our family planning program, if I'm not mistaken?
That's right.
Years ago?
Yeah, I do remember that.
But I do not know if we had access to the video afterwards.
That's right.
I do know that we did some work with them to get one implemented at the theater, though. I think it was probably thirteen or fourteen.
Yeah, that's right. I'd forgotten about that. But that, that was just my question, was, you know, if, if we had...
As a thought, we haven't decided a hundred percent on that yet, have they?
Well, the board, the Board of Health mentioned at the last meeting is trying to run through some of the cheaper movies that were done during the late summer to catch some of those kids that might be there.
Yeah, so we just wanted, we're trying to find a way to best get a...
Correct.
Right, catch an audience.
Right, so we're thinking about where they're, which, which movies, what they'd be watching, and obviously, they're probably going to watch what we're doing, you know, inexpensive movies, you know, movies that are out a long time ago and come in, so they target, kids will be there most likely now.
Correct.
Okay. And, but, I mean, I, I just, I was thinking, we are paying for it, but again, I don't know how far that...
Goes.
Yeah. That, that proprietary, whatever, I don't know what the term is, council, but, you know, whatever that is, you know, that if we could get a copy and use it on our social media, put it on our webpage, you know, maybe even show it, you know, when we're running the things here on the TV in this building.
I can definitely ask.
You know, that, that...
We could have a bonus.
Mm-hmm. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that, I, I just wanted people to be aware of it. I think it's, that's an out-of-the-box idea, you know, to do something like that.
Something different.
Any other questions?
I'm just looking at this thing you're talking about, running at the theater.
Mm-hmm.
If people qualify for WIC, can they afford to go to the theater? I can't afford to go to that theater.
Well, it's like they were talking about, like, the matinees in the summer.
Yes, sir, they go.
Yeah. So, sometimes...
You go out there and buy a bag of popcorn, you won't go back for it.
I can't afford the popcorn.
No. Well, that's probably not our healthy list either. But, but yeah, another way to reach out. Okay, is there a motion?
Certainly.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Should we go work, Keith?
Yes, definitely. Okay. All right. Presentation of Capital Improvements Program, Mr. Crump.
Mr. Silverman is going to introduce it.
All right.
Comment. You guys are already getting excited. You want to call me Slitherman? Go for it. Go for it.
Never again, never again.
I was just happy because I'm just prepared for something great.
I know. It's going to be very straight to the point. I know you guys had a rather long meeting start, so I'll try to be brief and to the point. Well, as I said, this is just kind of a brief overview of our C I P process, and as of right now, just give you a little background, the C I P is a five-year plan. We address capital improvement projects that are five hundred thousand dollars or more. And this current C I P, the requests were sixty-nine million dollars, and compared to the previous C I P, which was eighty-five million dollars, we've seen a significant decrease, and that is primarily because of funding starting this May. We're addressing the Central Carolina Community College bonds and also the new elementary school. And as far as projects for this current C I P, we have eighteen. Two are located in administration. Thirteen are located in the public school system. Two are located in community development, and one is located in public safety. Just to give you a little bit more information about these projects, there are two new projects. One is the Lee County Library Expansion. Now, that has been on previous C I Ps, but it was not on last year, so we're starting that up again. And the second project is for the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and that is for a firing range. Now, it's important to remember that the thirteen projects that tie into the education system account for about fifty-six percent of our C I P requests, and that is probably around thirty-nine million dollars. And the other part that I want to highlight is the recommendation that we're making as far as C I P requests goes ties into about forty-eight million dollars and eight hundred and twenty-six and six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And that's...
In the next five years.
In the next five years. And at this point, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'll go ahead and make a point while you're on, thinking about questions. In the K twelve requests, if the state were to allow the voters to vote on a school bond, school construction bond, and that school construction bond were to pass, between the bond money and lottery, you could, they could do just about every project but the new elementary school that they asked for. So we would knock out quite a bit of their requests and take care of some, you know, deferred maintenance issues that are going on at the two middle schools mainly. So that would be, you haven't, we haven't talked a lot about that. Haven't talked a lot about it with the Board of Education yet, but we will be meeting with the superintendent on the twenty-first at five o'clock, and I'm sure that will be something that would be discussed on the capital side. That would alleviate the county having to borrow money, basically, for deferred maintenance, which would be a big, big deal for us. The Sheriff's firing range, it's just one of those things that, that has come up. Put it in the C I P to put it on the radar, because there are some issues with the city's firing range and its proximity to the airport. There have been some concerns, not because of what's going on there, but people hear the noise, pilots hear some of the firing, and want to know what's going on. So there may have to be a relocation of it, so put, we put that in the, in the C I P just to really make you all aware of that. And then there is one big omission. You know, we haven't, haven't discussed it, but in the long term, you know, the three million dollars that we've set aside and the borrowing that's going to be completed on Wednesday this week for the courthouse projects, that's really a temporary fix. You might get, you know, three to five years out of that before we come back around again where we will need to discuss additional space. And at that point, you're talking about construction and, you know, a significant number, and dealing with our architects right now, there are already a lot of logistical issues with how you move people around in the building, namely trying to get the folks who are in our jail into the courtrooms and do it in a safe manner. And so, just some things that, you know, the building's over twenty years old, and we have, you know, outgrown it and makes life interesting, and plus, we haven't really addressed this building. We have some issues of our own, so some things that are missing in the C I P we need to be thinking about in the long term. But thank you to Michael, he did a great job putting this together. He, he accepted the cover letter I wrote. He did everything with the help of Ms. Mentor, so it was a good learning project for...
Is there a proposed location for that firing range? Not around the airport, is it?
No, sir. We had, we, the sheriff would really like to have it down at the old landfill in Lemon Springs. Thinks it's a good location out in the middle of nowhere, and we already own the property, and the property will never be used for anything else. So, so, you know, it's just one of those things that was thrown out as an idea. That's the only location we considered, but...
Does the city want to be part of that as well?
The city is evaluating. I think they like their location. They don't really want to move, but if the runway was ever extended, it would have to move. So...
Didn't someone have one out on Fair Road years ago?
I'm not sure. You got the hunting club out on Deep River Road.
Yeah, but there was one out, yeah.
That was on train years ago.
Yeah.
City had one down there. What about that statewide school bond referendum? Do you think that's going to be on the ballot this fall?
Only if there's a change of heart in the Senate.
Well, yeah.
You know, it's passed the House, so it was passed over in the, in the last long session over to the Senate. So there's, there's going to be a big push between the Association of County Commissioners and the Association of School Boards. I think that's the right word. And... And so they're, they're going to try to get the Senate to allow that to go forward.
I guess you're going to have to disperse of that money once they get it back.
Yes, sir, that's in the bill, it's in the proposed bill, and it is being, the calculation is being changed right now, but the previous calculation would have given us quite a bit of money to, to address these issue. And the new calculation, they're trying to put forward to help the smaller counties get more funds. Small rural counties are having difficulty, mainly with maintenance of facilities. They're not growing, but they're old facilities, they need to keep going, and they just can't do it.
And there's a, with the association, Doc, there's, you know, you've got, you've got quite a few school systems that have just passed, or counties that have just passed school bonds or borrowed money to build schools. And then you have some that aren't in need of new construction because they're, they're not growing anymore. So what the association was sort of lobbying for was to give the option in the school, state school bond, to either use the money that the county received for new construction, for maintenance and repair, or to pay down debt. So we felt like that would do a better job of helping all the counties. But like the manager said, the Senate's just not conducive to doing anything this November, but the House has passed.
John, I would say we don't need to be shy about asking the city to go in half of us on a few things, too. With that, with that, of ours.
Well, we have in the past asked them, and sometimes they've said yes, and sometimes they've said no.
Right.
So.
Keep that in mind, huh?
We just.
Which one, the no or yes?
Anyway, I'm going to talk a little bit about the budget, just a little bit, under my comments.
Let me ask you on this library project. I recall there being a utility high usage in that building. Have we ever considered Duke doing an evaluation?
We have had Progress Energy do evaluations to do the, what do you call that?
It was the green audit, or?
Yeah, where they come in and they do a thing where the saving, the company finances it basically, and the savings from the electricity, you know, pay the debt back on the improvements, and that building was so expensive that the utility savings would not cover it. So it was not done.
It was like five years, four.
Yeah, it was, we haven't had it reevaluated in a while, but it wouldn't hurt to have it reevaluated again, I don't think. So I will give it to Mr. Spivey, and we'll add that to our list.
This is something, it's like a money pit.
We, we had, we had a, one of the.
Skylights.
Skylights get shot out, or shot at, or something happened, whatever. But a, one of the skylights broke. We're still trying to get it fixed, and it's going to be around.
Around $8,000.
$8,000.
For one skylight. That makes it super hot in there in the summertime anyway. I just, I told Beth, maybe a sheet of plywood, it might be the best idea for right now, I mean.
If there was a way to put a metal roof over the top of that skylight.
I know.
Just put in some lights in there, it would be a better savings.
Yeah, it would be so much cooler in there in the summertime. But that was the thing back when we built that building.
It was, it was.
You know, that was, that was.
Built in the seventies, that was the architecture.
Any other questions, Ray?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you so much. Okay, consideration of an offer to purchase property located on Hooker Street, Ms. Parrish.
Yes, the city and the county owed school closure property on 1380 Hooker Street. That PIN number is 9642544884, and we foreclosed on that property back in 2012. The amount that's owed on the property is $7,678.93, which includes attorney fees and then the city taxes and county taxes. And if I recall, I'm sure they demolished the house that was there, so that's part of the reason for the expense. The current tax value of the property is $2,600. Brick Capital Community Development Corporation has submitted an offer to purchase the property for $800. And they submitted the offer to purchase, they also submitted a 5% required deposit and enough for the advertising cost to run the Herald. If you all choose to accept the offer, as we do with the other surplus properties, this will give upset bid procedure. We, in the resolution, first we'll declare the property a surplus and then authorize staff to accept the offer and advertise it in the Herald. I did have that the offer has to be approved by the city council, I spoke with their council in the last week, and they addressed it at their last meeting, and what they decided to do is just go ahead and need the property to us, and then we'll sell it, and then at the end, if there's anything, we'll split the amount. It first goes to attorney fees, so if it's $800, then it's. And in the packets, the property card, the resolution, the original deed where we foreclosed on it, the information about what's owed on the property.
Any questions? Motion?
I'm going to accept, I have a question after that.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, I guess in the vein of affordable housing, when the county, if the county gets to be the sole owner of a piece of property, is it permissible for us to consider donating that property for affordable housing?
I don't believe so, I don't think that we can donate, well, we can donate it to certain, like we did with the Housing Authority. I think we can maybe give it to them with certain deed restrictions, but outright donation, I'm not certain.
I'd like it to have it looked into before we move into further.
Okay.
So you want to put this on hold?
I would do that, so.
Okay, so the motion is to table this until we get that answer about donating and be able to do that at the next meeting, I'm sure. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you, it's a good idea. All right, request for approval to change credit card processing from official payments to bill-to-pay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On page 94, you have a slight summary of the process with official payments, and that's wanting to change, and a comparison of fees. I do want to make one correction. On the bill-to-pay fees, there's a $2.50 charge for e-check. After reviewing the contract, that should only be $1.50. And also, Ms. Parrish has asked me to remind, to let you know that there is an updated contract at your spot.
Right.
Okay, but I wanted to give you a little bit more information on why we are choosing to change. As I said in the agenda abstract, we started with official payments several years ago, and they were one of the few companies that actually handled online payments for taxes and all. But since then, official payments was bought out by ACI Worldwide, and since that time, the customer service has been less than acceptable. If we have to process a reversal, it's taken from a month to several months to be addressed properly, which has resulted in the taxpayer having to wait that long before being reimbursed funds due to them. Those issues carry over affecting the tax office and the finance office. Since the buyout, we have had a hard time tracking the adjustments when they come back through. They may come in separately, they may be mixed in with other deposits, and it's hard to get a decent report now. The issues with customer service as well as the fees charged by ACI led us to look for an alternative solution to meet the needs of our taxpayers and allow them to be able to continue with the convenience of paying by credit or e-check. The search led us to Bill2Pay, which is partnered with Autoagent, a vendor that we currently have an established business relationship with. Currently, we upload our current tax files to Autoagent, and mortgage companies or service agents use Autoagent to pay real estate taxes for their clients. This has drastically reduced the need for processing refunds and expedited the timeframe of receiving the funds. Bill2Pay works with Autoagent using the same automation. Kyle Edwards in IT has said we will have the capability to upload current outstanding tax bill files daily or multiple times a day. This will allow the Bill2Pay system to access the bills due, and the taxpayer will have the option to pay their taxes by credit card or e-check. Currently, one of the issues that we are experiencing with ACI occurs when taxpayers are trying to pay their motor vehicle tax bills that are no longer billed by the county. So they get their bill, they don't realize that it's not a county bill, and they try to go into our system and pay it, and the current system will allow that, which means then we have to process refunds. With Bill2Pay, using Autoagent, we'll upload that file, and if they, that bill does not show up in that file when they try to put the number in or something, it will not allow them to pay it. So in addition, Bill2Pay has offered us Lee County much better rates on the payments being processed through Bill2Pay, and they will supply the devices that the taxpayer will use for the scanning of their card at no cost to the county. Counties will, excuse me, taxpayers will continue to have the option to pay by phone, online, or in the office, and Bill2Pay is PCI compliant, which is a very big issue to us. So when, I will point out to you also, if you've read the abstract, that it's noted that we will be coming back to you next month with a different contract for recreation. When we started the recreation package process, we did not realize we'd be switching from official payment, so RecPro company have been working with us to establish that relationship as we requested. When we made the switch, or knew we were going to be asking to make the switch, we, RecPro was contacted. It was going to take quite a bit more time for them to switch out from official payments to Bill2Pay. They already have an established relationship with a company called Forte. Ms. Parrish has been working and reviewing that contract. I've reviewed it, their rates are reasonable and in line similar to Bill2Pay, so we will, we'll be coming back to you next month with that finalized contract, asking you to approve that. Until that time, that that's up and running, Recreation will continue to use their current system and use Bill2Pay. Okay, so I'm asking at this time if there are any questions, if not, if you would please approve us moving ahead with Bill2Pay.
And also, as part of the motion, if you'll just give us the authority to give notice to official payments.
To discontinue.
Yes, I apologize, I forgot that.
So your counsel has reviewed the terms and conditions. Is this a contract? How do you, how do you handle this?
It is a contract.
Okay. A year?
It's determined, it's 36 months, but we have a 90-day, we can get, we, I can't remember how much it is, but we can, we can terminate with, for convenience, upon 90 days worth of this. So that just locks in the price for the term.
I wouldn't read it, long as you're okay with it.
I like the, the letters that you included, you know, from other counties and all, you know, that, that stated what a good relationship they had, I mean, that's good to hear.
Staff did vet this out very well. Debbie Odom on my staff and Danette Fitzpatrick from the tax staff went to one of the conferences that tax had, where the vendors would be, talked to the vendors and everything, and then came back, and as you can see, did additional research to check it out, so feel like they've done a good job with their homework.
That was impressive.
Want to approve?
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to request for approval of audit contract with Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams and Company, P.A., for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018.
Yes, ma'am. As you know, we're required to have an annual audit of our financial statements each year. In April of 2015, you approved a five-year audit service proposal with Thompson, Price, Scott and Adams. This will be our fourth year of that contract, or that proposal, so we are asking that you approve the audit contract with them at $35,500. I do want to let you know that because of changes at the state level, I will be coming back to you sometime in the near future with an additional contract to them for agreed-upon procedures audit that is being required by the state. The state has run into issues, not with Lee County turning stuff in late, but with other counties turning stuff in late, making it hard for them to comply with their guidelines under single audit. So they are forcing all the counties into this agreed-upon procedures contract. I do not have a definite cost on that yet, they are, our audit firm is waiting to get the information on what all they're going to be required to audit, or how much they will have to do, but that will be forthcoming. So I just want to make you aware of it this time, that that will be in addition to the $35,500.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
Let me ask a question. Is this the last year of the contract with Thompson?
No, we'll have one more year after this year. They audit a year behind, so while, they'll audit the fiscal year, 2019 also.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Just keep going.
We'll have to skip the budget amendment for right now.
Yeah, we'll skip that, and go on to the financial report, please, ma'am.
Right, you will find the financial report for the month of March 2018 on page 129 of your package. We are at 95.69% of our budget on taxes as being collected at this point. As far as expenditures go, we're looking at 75%. Juvenile detention is still, is at 87.39%, and part of the budget amendment that you'll consider after the close session is upping that line item to help us bring that back in line. The emergency medical services is at 78.36 due to the payment to the hospital for the ambulance purchase that we assisted them with. And then emergency management is at 76.9%, 0.9% due to equipment purchases. I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any on that before I go to sales tax. If not, if you look at page 132 of your agenda package, you will see the sales tax distribution report through collections through January 2018. We are still in line with our budget percentages, and we are still averaging a growth of about 6.86% at this time. And just for our portion, for the countywide, it's just a little bit lower than that, at 6.57. It's great, still doing well.
Any questions or comments? I just want to say one thing, I, I, I don't know if pleasure is the right word, it was educational. Went to the local government commission meeting with the manager and Ted's, Bond Council, is that?
They are our financial advisor.
They're our financial advisor, that's right. And I sat there and, and listened to other counties being examined, I guess is the best word.
Good word, they were very examined.
They were examined about their financial status and how they manage their taxpayers' dollars. And I just sat there with the manager in disbelief, like, oh my gosh, I mean, we have the best financial department, bar none. I mean, I, I just, I just want to say how much I appreciate everything you and your staff do, because, oh my gosh, I just couldn't believe some of the things that I heard that day, it wasn't education, but thank you so much.
I was not able to go with y'all because I would have loved to have been there, but it was, thank you very much for the compliment, we appreciate.
Made me really nervous for other counties in the state.
Mr. Crump was telling me about some of the stories when he came back, and I thought, I would cringe, but.
Yeah.
There are a lot of areas, and, and then some finance department defenses. I will say that sometimes, you know, what we say or what we recommend can only go so far.
Sure.
And stuff, but there are some scary things that go on.
Understood.
And all, but I'm glad to see that Lee County fared well at that meeting and we were approved.
Thank you, brought your hard work on that.
Be finished as of Wednesday, sometime Wednesday morning, and have our money hopefully in our trust account.
Thank you for all your hard work on that.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. I just had to say that, that was just unreal that day. Okay. Yes, sir, please.
This was part of the report I gave this morning at the Chamber Public Policy Meeting, but the national hurricane preparedness week is this week. So we encourage everyone to listen to public announcements on what to do to get prepared for hurricanes. I don't, I didn't hear Debbie say it, but senior games starts this month, May 14th, so hopefully everybody who was eligible got to get in. The, the closing on the Wicker School, as Lisa said, will occur Wednesday this week, and we have not met since. And we have not met since the bond sale, so we had an incredible bond sale. We were the only North Carolina entity that sold on that day or that week. So there were thirty-three million dollars worth of bonds presented. We had over ninety million dollars worth of bids on the bonds. It drove the interest rate down to an average of the twenty bonds at three point one seven percent. So we were forecasted the week before at three point four one and then came in at three point one seven. We were dancing. And I'll tell you, that was a great, great, great sale, so. But I said I was going to talk a little bit about the budget. I, you know, it's now it's reality. We're going to pay for that borrowing. And that borrowing starts in the coming year. So even though the school won't be finished, our project won't be finished, we're going to make a full year debt payment in that first year coming up. So it has quite an impact on the upcoming budget, about two point two million dollars worth of an impact on the upcoming budget. So the mayor said the, the city's budget was tight, the county budget is tight. But it was planned for and expected because of the borrowing, so. But even so, very excellent bond sale. We're very excited. Upcoming events tomorrow, and this came, I don't know if the notice came out late, but I know it was announced at their last meeting, but the oil and gas commission meets at one o'clock tomorrow in Raleigh. And then the legislature goes back in the session next Wednesday. I think it's May sixteen. On May twenty-fourth is the opioid forum. I want to follow up, but it's our second meeting. And that is at six o'clock. I believe that's at the McSwain Center again. And then on May twenty-ninth, that's a Tuesday, I believe, also at six o'clock. There, we're having a public comment review of the parks' master plans that have been developed right here in the Gordon Wicker Room. So what we'll do is at each table, we'll have like stations set up. And there'll be designers and architects at each stable, at each table, and hopefully some staff as well. And the citizens can go around each table and look at the plans that the landscape architect has developed for each park.
Isn't that a floating thing?
Yes, it's a floating thing. It's not really, we're not having a meeting.
Okay.
Kind of like what the marshal and his group did.
With the land use.
Yes, with the land use. Because that's really the best way to get a view and be able to ask questions. So we'll also be taking comments, you know, at the time, so we hope the public will show up and come make those comments. Thank you for allowing me to give that update.
Um, special comment? You can pass? Okay. Doc? Yes, sir. We are at that already.
I think I'm going to pass tonight. I don't think I ever left.
Okay. All right. Christopher Reeves?
Probably bring the twins.
All right. Well, I just, a couple of things. Did you mention the Wicker groundbreaking?
No, ma'am. I did not. And I forgot to mention one other thing.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
We had an incident out here on Friday.
I didn't know if you wanted that.
And I just want to tell the board, we have an incredible staff. We had an employee who helps remove trash and recycling from, from our buildings. Came to this building, was opened the door right out here for the staff as they were coming in, and he had a massive heart attack right there at eight o'clock in the morning on Friday. And our staff, health department, Lisa Faulkner in tax, and then the nurse that we had over here at the health clinic, they were able to get his heart beating again. And when EMS showed up, they did all that, they transported him. And he is still with us today. So the quick work of our employees saved that man's life. It was a pretty cool event. Kind of touch and go on Friday, whether he would make it through the weekend, but he's still with us today. And very thankful for, for the quick reaction of all the employees. It was one of Russell's guys, so. Great work.
Doing, doing, doing better. Still in the hospital?
He's still in the hospital, but he's still critical, but he's, he's stable, he's somewhat stable now. They're trying to get him where they can remove the.
Ventilator.
Ventilator. You know, it's a process of the day and time, but he's a really fine gentleman.
I would just, I would just say that from, from previous experiences, that you really can put a price on, on having the opportunity to see a loved one alive again. So, and that's what I relay on to the nurse and, and the folks that were involved in this. That really is a blessing. You can put a price on that. Had that happened somewhere else without the medical care that we have in this building, it would have been a total different story. From here, he goes to the parks. He's, he's out there on his own. And it's just, you know, it is, it is a blessing and his family is extremely grateful that we had the staff here that was able to send that dad home, you know, I mean, to, to the hospital. You know, it's a seventy-five-year-old man. He's a, he's an army veteran. He's had a couple of heart attacks in the past. So he is, he is as tough as you can get.
He's tough.
But, but his family is, will be eternally grateful to the staff that we have here.
That's an excellent point, too, that, to, to just have that time.
We're about helping, I believe Sharon will correct you to help with that, too. So I'd like to say we truly appreciate it and we, we went around and thanked you personally for Friday because it was.
Got a good, you got a good family.
Yeah, and I really was greatly appreciated and I taught with the, I taught with the grandson and picked up his truck and they were very gracious.
That's what saved his life.
Yeah, that, I mean, hate it happened, but glad, if it had to happen, it happened here. Where he had, you know, trained people around to help him out, so that's good. Again, May seventeenth at ten-thirty is the WB Wicker groundbreaking for the school, so you're invited to that. May fifteenth, the manager and I are going to meet at CCCC with DOT about their concerns about pedestrian crossing across Kelly Drive. So you can imagine what we're going to weigh in on when we're there, that maybe the best thing would be not to have a pedestrian crossing Kelly Drive, so we'll keep you updated on that meeting.
On that same day at five o'clock? Ripper cutting at five o'clock?
Oh, yes, for the, for the.
The new building, Health Science Building.
Johnson Building and the Civic.
Civic Center.
Right. Yes, at, at five. And, and the report to the people has been postponed because that was a conflict. They were having it at the same time, cooperative extensions, report to the people, and that's been moved to June fourteenth. Remember, this weekend is Arts and Vine. Been asked to mention that. And we have another meeting next Monday, same time, same station, right?
Six o'clock.
Oh, at six, not five. Okay. Gosh, I've been.
It's at six, right. Yes. We know that Dr. Connect has issues with the five o'clock, so we set that one at six.
Six o'clock. And, and then of course our regular scheduled meeting on the twenty-first. And the twenty-ninth, he said, was the parks review. Okay? And my last thing is please, 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 tell our young folks, please drive the speed limit and wear your seatbelt. We had another accident in the Broadway area this past week with another fatality and two critically injured, you know, high speed, no seatbelt. It's, it's beautiful weather and everybody has spring fever and all that good stuff. And I vaguely remember what it's like to be in your teens and twenties. But, but please, 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 slow down. Yes, they are. Yes, they are. So, and, and just a, a, a big heartfelt thank you to our volunteer firefighters. We have one sitting right up here. They have had some tough calls to go on the last few months. So if you see one, hug them, buy them a cup of coffee, tell them thank you because we just don't appreciate them enough and all the things that they do. They'll drop everything. And they are volunteers to go and they don't know what they're getting ready to go into, but they do it humbly and, and a hundred percent. So thank you very much. With that.
Madam Chair, I have a motion that this will go into closed session. Per North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, parentheses A, parentheses three, to consult with our attorney. Also, per North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, point eleven, parentheses A, parentheses six, to discuss a personnel.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you very much for everybody coming out.
They're recording.
I didn't.
Two and four.
Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You taught me very well. Two more things. Two more we forgot. And all my pieces are firing tonight. It won't, you know, it won't take but a second.
Power comes from this power strip here don't work.
How do you tell Russ?
I've been all of them. They're kind of plugged in to just like that.
Okay, well, there's four of us here. I hate that. Are they coming?
Say, they have a one on one.
When I close session, right?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay.
Zach here.
Yeah, that's right.
Zach, you want to get started?
I'm sorry.
Uh, okay. All right, so we're going to go back to page 126. We have the budget amendment for Ms. Minter that we needed to put after the closed session. So if you want to run us through that right quick, please, ma'am. 126.
Yes, on page 126, an actual amendment's on page 127. You have before you budget amendment number 11 for this year. This amendment appropriates $25,000 into the state services area, which is for the juvenile detention line item. In help department, you're appropriating $11,020 from NACHO and AFDO grant funds for environmental health expenses. You approved those grants earlier this year. They just have finally decided how they're going to spend that money and submitted that. Commissioners, you're appropriating $25,000 from fund balanced for professional services legal, which will be used to assist the county with the development of ordinances related to mining and oil and gas development.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, one more thing. After the CIP presentation by Mr. Silverman, we need a motion for the CIP public hearing for June the 4th. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, and one more motion. All right, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. See you next Monday.
Next Monday. What's going on next Monday?
The budget workshop. We're going to see each other three times this month.
Next budget.